With that, we'll bring this meeting of the City of Virginia Planning Commission to order. The meeting we open with for public comment. I'm looking in the audience for anybody that would like to express a public comment. And I'm seeing that there are no takers. So with that, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the Rivendell PUD Land Use Board of Appeals remand. And first, I'd like to take official recognition of the Land Use Board decision. I guess I can make the motion?
Sure.
Okay, by making a motion that the city, that the Board recognized that decision. So I can see I've had a second from Commissioner Leddick, opposed in favor?
I suppose.
I thought we might.
Discussion?
Well, we're acknowledging received, that's all right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I asked if you would take official notice of Luba's decision.
Just recognize.
I just want to understand the procedure because in my tenure, we've never been here before.
Is that right? Remember that.
Right.
You've got a few easy questions.
Anyways, I agree with it.
I think there's going to be some discussion here. I'd like to first open up for a brief by Emily on where we are.
Yeah, and I think before I get into the substance of Luba's decision, I wanted to make clear that both John Jaworski and Steve Baker are not participating on remand, in part following advice from my office. And as you get remands from Luba, those are the two commissioners that were not part of the commission when the initial decision was made. We're going to have more of those, and although I advised in this case that they not participate, I will not do that on most. So they will have to kind of get up to speed on other ones if they want to participate, and we'll want them to do that. On this one, as you'll see when we get into the discussion, it's a really discreet issue, and Luba was very directive as to what it is telling you you need to do. And perhaps more importantly, for those of you that participated in the original decision, you had the benefit of the entire record in front of you. The retained exhibits that are originals and we don't have duplicates of, in this case, are still up in Salem. I haven't gotten those back from Luba yet. So you've seen and handled those, or at least had the opportunity to. Steve and John could not, and in order for us to move today, they couldn't participate, or we would have had to postpone and get those back to give them an opportunity to look at everything. I know Commissioner Baker's made it real clear, he wants to participate in everything he can. And I don't know that it's any different for Commissioner Jaworski, but I wanted to just make clear that I think he would be participating had it not been for strong legal advice in other direction. Is there anything you want to say about that, Steve?
No. Well, the only thing I would suggest is I think it makes sense if we are having these decisions to get the entire record back.
Before.
Beforehand, or if it means making sure we make a good copy before we submit it or whatever. So it seems to me that it's important to have an entire record here because if other commissioners can't remember something and need to be refreshed on it, then you don't have the material. That's irrelevant about whether a commissioner sat in on it. It just seems to me good policy to have all the material here. If a commissioner needed to see something at this point to make some follow-up decision, that we'd have the information available.
I'm sorry, John?
I wonder if it isn't possible for Commissioner Baker to participate in the discussion but not the deliberation?
You know, I don't know that it would be a procedural problem, but I'm going to say no because I happen to know that he was not provided with the record. And so he hasn't had the opportunity to really educate himself on the issues yet. Our policy generally is, though, if you're not going to vote, you don't participate. And it usually comes up in a different context. It usually comes up because there's some sort of potential conflict of interest or something, in which case we would really want that person away from the table. This is a little different, but I would still recommend that, just those of you who were here for the initial decision-making.
Well, alternatively, before we begin our deliberations, can he be given the opportunity to at least state his thoughts?
Sure.
Well, no, the problem is, because I wasn't...
You haven't had a chance.
The only thing I had was the AIS, which really just, you know how it excerpts things? It doesn't describe the entire picture. I would be uncomfortable about making a position. I was just going to come here, because I don't know, John might have been here as well. I didn't, because there's some other things that we may discuss. I know Randy has... So I would be here, and then I, once you disrupt the discussion, I would accuse myself. So I'll be away from there.
Which, I'll tell you, that's not necessary here because there isn't a conflict issue, but I appreciate that approach.
Yeah, no, I mean, if I had had part of the records, you know, except for some of the things, and I had a chance to read them all over, then I would. But just from the AIS, you know how this body is, so.
I just didn't want to walk you out.
Thank you, I appreciate the thought.
So, the Luba decision, it actually began procedurally complicated at Luba because there were two issues that were appealed that were filed separately. Luba combined them. We fought their, we didn't want them combined. Luba did it anyway, and then realized in the end that actually they shouldn't have them combined, and they broke them back apart. So there are two Luba decisions, only one of which is back before you, but both of them are kind of discussed in the final, in the final order that deals with your issue. So I'm going to talk to you about both. The first issue was the appeal fee concern. You've had a number of issues before you where litigants or petitioners have argued that the local appeal fee is too high, or that it doesn't comport with state law that tells us how we have to formulate appeal fees. And we've been giving you, we had initial in-depth discussions about the issue, and since that time, you've adopted consistently the same kind of language in your final orders. And in the packet today, if you look at page 13 of the packet, it's page seven of your previous decision on this. Appellant's second PUD assignment of error is about that appeal fee. And it basically, this language that you've adopted explains the planning commission's review is limited to determining whether or not the hearings official failed in some way to properly evaluate the application, or didn't look at the criteria the right way. So when someone comes to you and says, "My appeal fee was too high," the code limits your jurisdiction, your scope of review, in a way that doesn't allow you to get to that question. And although I think it's an important issue, and it's one that we have dealt with and are dealing with, it isn't properly before the planning commission, and those are the findings you've been adopting. And so you prevailed on that determination in the Willamette Oaks case. It was brought up again in this case. In this case, we went further and argued to Luba that actually it's not even a land use decision for Luba's review, that whether or not, how much we charge for fees is not a question of land use, it's actually a fiscal issue that properly goes to the circuit court and not the Land Use Board of Appeals, in large part because it needs a different record than you produce for these things. And Luba agreed that it doesn't have jurisdiction, and so it granted our motion to dismiss the appeal fee issue, and that was one of the orders, the final orders that they produced. So I don't think you're ever going to need to make findings like this again, to the extent that there are local appellants who sort of know the lay of the land and what we've been through on fees, they're going to realize it's a dead issue as far as bringing it to planning commission. So hopefully we won't be seeing the appeal fee issue again, at least not in this venue. But like I said, just for your background, it is an issue that enough people have brought it up, that planning staff are tracking their time and trying to make sure that the local appeal fee actually is reasonable in terms of the statute and what it takes for staff to handle them. The second issue, yeah?
Once we're done with this deliberation, can we have a discussion about what we're talking about as far as reviewing appeal fees? Because I know that there are members of the Neighborhood Leaders Council who are concerned about the appeal fee for them, so it'd be useful to know where we're at. But it's not germane to this discussion at the moment, so can we hold it till later?
Yeah, and don't let it get by, don't let it get past us without, I may forget. Actually, I'll write it right here. So the second issue, and the reason that you're gathered today in the Rivendell application, I'm going to start with just some background. This relates to a condition that was imposed by the planning commission. The applicant was requesting a PUD, and as part of the PUD wanted, how do you say, you guys relax?
Noncompliance was proposed.
Okay, yeah, they call them noncompliance. So through a PUD, there's some given take on standards. The applicant requested a reduction in the normal minimum interior yard setback, which is normally five feet. The applicant wanted three feet for interior yard setbacks, and that was consistent with what the city had approved for all the previous phases of the Rivendell PUD. The hearings official granted it, but actually limited it, limited the reduction to lots that would be developed with single-story dwellings. So said you can have the three-foot instead of five-foot setback as long as you're not building two-story dwelling.
Emily, question?
Yep.
Did the, in your opinion, did the hearings official's condition apply to the perimeter lots also?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, my understanding, that only limitation...
Then all interior line lots, including those that abutted perimeter developments.
There was no discussion at the hearings official level about abutting some different subdivisions and the surrounding, surrounding this one.
Commissioner Veltcher?
And we don't know at this point which lots are intended to be developed, as single-story or two-story lots.
No.
Okay.
No, okay. So the applicant appealed that limitation to you, and said, "What I want you to do is remove that limitation, let me have the three-foot setback instead of the five-foot setback on all the lots in the subdivision." And the planning commission first made a determination that it rejected the hearings official's limitation. You guys said, "Yeah, there doesn't seem to be any basis for allowing this only on single-story lots." But instead of just removing that condition, this body decided to impose a different limitation. And quite honestly, I was here, and the record isn't, it's not like you said, "But what we want is..." What happened is, you said, "We don't think the hearings official's limitation is okay." You had a lot of discussion around different compatibility issues, but then said, "Yeah, we want to do what we've done in the other subdivisions, that seems fair." And so staff came back with a revised order that you considered that had the limitation that existed actually in all those other subdivisions that said it won't apply to interior lot lines that abut another subdivision that is not a previous phase of Rivendell. The applicant then appealed that limitation to Luba. And Luba said, and they actually have a pretty good quote that explains, and I think I put it in email to you, they agreed that the planning commission exceeded its authority when, instead of doing what the appellant asked, did something that Luba viewed as kind of completely different. You're not always required to just, you're not always limited to taking a condition away that they don't want. There are times when, according to Luba's decision, it would have been okay to revise the condition. In this case, Luba said no. Luba said, "Where an applicant appeals a hearings official's decision challenging a condition of approval, and the planning commission on appeal agrees that the condition of approval is not authorized by the code and eliminates a condition, we believe the planning commission is entitled to consider the effect of eliminating the condition on the application as a whole. If eliminating the condition, so in our case, if taking that, the single multi-story issue out would affect the application's compliance with the approval criteria, then we believe the planning commission could go on to consider whether a new or modified condition is necessary to avoid noncompliance created by deleting the original impermissible condition." They didn't stop there, though. If they'd have stopped there, we'd have more to talk about today. Luba went on and said, "In this case, that's not what happened. There's no apparent connection between the one-story, two-story distinction imposed by the hearings official and the effect of reduced setbacks on neighboring subdivisions." This is a quote, "In other words, eliminating the one-story, two-story condition did not cause or affect noncompliance with any approval standard." So Luba actually already said, "You can't justify the new condition that this body imposed." We could have appealed that determination from Luba to the Court of Appeals. We did not. We are...
Why?
Thank you.
I don't make that decision, but it is, we tend to look at whether a particular case, if we're going to take it to the Court of Appeals, I mean, it's very, it's expensive in terms of staff time, and you could equate that to some money, but, and task list issues. But this particular ruling has no impact on future applications. I mean, I don't, I don't think that Luba is wrong with respect to their general holding, which is, you can only mess with a criterion in this context, and it's very specific as to its context, if you need to do so to basically address the damage you did by taking the condition completely off. I think that is reasonable under the law. Whether or not there could have been a discussion around this table on remand as to how imposing it on some lots and not others is what you had to do to deal with the fact that you're taking it off single-story dwelling lots, you follow me? Didn't seem like an argument worth appealing to the Court of Appeals. But those decisions are finally made by the executive director, either by Sarah or Lisa.
I did not see that email.
I didn't either.
Oh, maybe you guys didn't forward an email.
Because I had the question of, and that explains it, and I understand it a lot better now, because I, basically, they said, "We eliminated a condition," and then we added one, is what they're saying, versus, "We modified an existing condition which we're allowed to do."
And you know, I, that...
So I understand it now.
We really did, like the findings, and by you, I understand, you know, we draft these things up and you guys come look at them. We learn a lot about how we draft them up for you from these decisions as well, but the decision's pretty clear. The first thing you did, and I think appropriately so, is determine whether or not the hearings official aired. And you found that he did air, and that that condition really bore no relationship to a criterion. Having decided that, then you imposed this other one.
And that makes a lot more sense to me, because I would have argued until I heard that, in that explanation from them, that what we did was create a modification on the side yard setback so that it minimizes the effect on adjoining subdivisions. So, I mean, I can agree with that explanation. Could you send us that?
Yeah, I'm sorry. What we tend to do is, I usually will do a summary for staff, and then they'll forward it on. Maybe because this was a remand, they wanted to keep the record.
I can't remember if we did or didn't.
Well, the relevant quotations she's providing are actually in the AIS for today's meeting, but if you wanted the email for context...
Oh, that's where I saw it. It's pretty much in your AIS.
I guess it just didn't come out in the same way, because my question was, why are we even here? It sounds like we've been given the gavel, and it's all done with, but with that explanation, it makes more sense to me that why we're even here is reasonably appropriate. Thanks.
Got other questions, or should we... Randy, you want to go ahead?
Are you done, Emily?
You done, Emily? You want to...
I can be done. I mean, just to point out, you've been given a revised final order, and it's as ordered by the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals revised final order. The changes in here are shown, and track changes, so you can see. And all it does is eliminate the words that restrict the condition to sites that don't obut remaining or other subdivisions. And that, actually, it was in two different conditions. Otherwise, it's exactly what you had before, gives you a new date. I think that's it.
Commissioner Leddick?
I've got just two questions. Generally, since this has never happened during Rick's tenure, what...
I'm so glad you said that.
What are our options?
Well, I was going to ask that after we got through this part.
You will come to know them, because we have several on the way, and I'll be happy to talk to you about that. Every single remand is different, every single one, and most of the time, you'll see me here because it depends on the nature of the remand. And that's why I wanted to be clear about why Commissioner Baker and Jaworski, why they're not here today, because it's pretty unusual. Normally, we'll want them here. It's not usually this cut and dry. Obviously, there's no reason to reopen the record here. There's no new evidence that's going to change what Luba told you. There is no, and that means there's no reason for a hearing. And so, I mean, there's very little for you to do on this one. On remand, a lot of the time, and actually, you probably do remember a few of these.
You had some.
Yeah.
Maybe it was the heavy-handedness that this one came through.
There are interpretation issues. Interpretation issues, where Luba says, "We don't understand the planning commission's findings, they need to interpret this term and that term," in which case, you may very well want to provide notice to folks again, and have more evidence, and in that case, you might create what is essentially a very different decision. Other times, you might get a remand on something very procedural, like you didn't send notice to a certain area, and we have to redo notice, and you have to redo the whole thing. So you basically have to be guided through each one to know what the process for a remand would be.
And as a sub-question of this, has a decision already been made? I mean, are we just pro forma doing something here? You said the decision has been made not to appeal it to the courts.
Right, are, yes. That decision's been made.
So what are we doing?
You, at this point, the applicant doesn't have a decision from you. At this point, since your initial decision was remanded, and we've been directed what to do with it, you hold the, you're the only body that holds the power to sign the new decision. So not a lot of discretion for you to exercise today, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending how you look at it. So you'll hear a motion from Commissioner Mills, and you're here to, my advice would be pass it.
Well, I just need some clarification, okay? Because what you just said about interpretation, or the way they, the way Luba judges understand something, could throw it back to us for interpretation. On page nine, item 18, they talk about however, they begin by saying, "However, as we understand the circumstances..."
I'm sorry, Randy, AIS.
Well, it's page nine.
AIS, page 23. Page 23, or...
Oh, okay.
Line 18.
Got you.
As we, that is the Luba judge, judges understand the circumstances. Might they not understand the circumstances correctly and give us an opportunity to clarify it for them?
They could have, but they didn't.
Okay.
Well, then let's pursue that a little bit. Backing up to line 11, and I want to read this just so it's clear. They say, and this is their, their direction to us, "If eliminating the condition would affect compliance with an applicable approval standard, then we believe the commission could go on to consider whether a new or modified condition is necessary to avoid noncompliance created by deleting the original impermissible condition."
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The approval standard is EC 9.8302, compatibility with neighboring, with adjacent neighborhoods. Okay. What we did, by eliminating the second story condition, by eliminating that condition, we affected compliance with, with the standard, 9.8302, compatibility with adjacent neighborhoods. And therefore, we're allowed to impose a new condition to avoid noncompliance created by eliminating the original condition. For whatever reason, the hearings official said, "Good for only one-story structures." And I did not go back into the record to find out why. We said, "No, that's wrong. If you're going to impose, if you're going to impose a condition or allow this to happen, you have to also allow it to happen to the second story. You can't not allow it to happen to the second story." But when that happens, you know, the big thing that we've been talking about is impact of new building on adjacent neighborhoods. I mean, and I've gotten on this over and over and over again. When we said, "Nope, you have to allow that setback for second story," I think we recognized that, yeah, but that's going to have an impact on the adjacent neighborhoods. Therefore, we want to impose a condition that was imposed on the first subdivision, you got to stay back. So I'm having, I'm trying to connect the dots here and figure out where Luba, where Luba missed the bolt.
Because...
I think we made a sound argument, and we based it on existing conditions.
You know, unfortunately, if you go back and listen to your discussions and read the minutes, didn't say it like that. I, there wasn't a point, I mean, it basically, that added restriction to not, not having it applied to the surrounding subdivisions. It just appeared in what staff brought back to you. There didn't appear to be a discussion laying it out like you did.
We based it on just what was imposed on, or what was part of the first...
The previous phases. So what happened here, recall, is that against my legal counsel, you guys took official notice of some, some things that the applicant brought in before you, when the record was closed. The hearings official had his determination, but there was no opposition. There was nobody showing up, no neighbors or anything, who, despite notice, who came to testify. And the applicant came in and said, "No, no, no, on appeal to you. What I want you to do is what you, what happened in the previous phases." And he had plans, and I said, "You can't take that into evidence," and you guys did anyway.
Some of us did.
Thanks, John.
That's not exactly how you said it.
Yeah, that's how I interpreted the whole thing. So, and that was where we first saw, oh, well, here's how it was done in the previous one. My recollection, I, I'm not, I have gone back and reviewed these when I was writing this brief so I could very distinctly say what you just said, and I could not get myself to do it because you and your decision-making process didn't quite do it like that. You said, "Yeah, we can't find a reason, we don't, the one-story, two-story thing, but yeah, they've been able to do this in all the other phases, we're going to let them do it." And we added in the same limitation, brought it back to you, you passed it. I think it could have made sense, and this is what I said in my summary. If it had stopped right there on remand, I think we could have that discussion, and I think it might fly, it might have flown. But Luba didn't stop there. They went and they looked at your record and said, "There's no apparent connection." They saw it, and they're not even just saying in the record, they're saying, "There's no apparent connection between the one-story, two-story distinction challenged in the appeal statement and ultimately rejected by the planning commission, and the effect of reduced setbacks on neighboring subdivisions." In other words, eliminating the one-story, two-story condition did not cause or affect noncompliance with any approval standard. Instead, the planning commission imposed a new condition to address a different perceived code compliance issue. And the difference was, the one-story, two-story thing happened throughout the whole development. That was imposed, not just on the outskirts.
Right.
And when that went away, and the condition we imposed as a planning commission went on, it applied to a different set of properties.
Adjacent neighborhoods.
Right, and that's not what the one-story, two-story thing was at, going at, not that I, but that doesn't seem to be how they're explaining it. I mean, I don't, I don't love this decision. I think the holding is okay. What they did on the facts in this case, I think, you know, we, it's, we maybe could have made another argument, and at the Court of Appeals, and had to go back through Luba and back down to you. The decision was not to do that here.
As important as the transition issue is, I'm surprised that it was chosen not to take this one forward and make that case.
Well, it's not... Well, it's not, if you look at the, it doesn't affect that many lots. I mean, this thing is not surrounded by a lot of non-Rivendell subdivisions.
It's the precedent.
Well, but I don't think this creates a bad precedent. And that was my point. Like, I think the holding is fine. Luba's rule, that if you take, in this situation, if you take what the hearings official did away, you can only put back that which is needed to make sure the applicant is compliant with other criteria. That's there. We can use that. They just said, "In this case, that's not what happened." So, I don't think this is a precedent issue that's gonna hurt the city and the neighborhoods in the future. And that's what we look at.
You think if we would've had on the record the discussion about affecting adjacent neighborhoods, that would've made a...
I don't think they would've bought it. I think they didn't buy it.
And just in the quick, in my looking back at the hearings official decision, when the original discussion about the five-foot setbacks came up, it was, because it was proposed as non-compliance, and it had to get to the purpose statements of the PUD, didn't talk at all about, it talked, the hearings official talked all about the interrelationship on the site, and the kind of the pedestrian feel. Then it kinda changed after that to the condition being more about compatibility, which the hearings official didn't address at all, as far as that being an issue. I don't know if that's where the, where I guess in future proceedings would be the ability to concentrate more on the compatibility screenings, findings.
And I would just add, I think in future cases like this, we'd want a much better-developed record in terms of evidence that would support the Planning Commission's discussion about that transition.
I was surprised this is a year and a half ago. I remember it like yesterday. And that initial discussion was about internal harmony and compatibility. But then we jumped to what would be the impact on the adjacent existing neighborhoods.
Right. I remember your discussion well, too. We talked about trying to get in-between two buildings, and you talked about fences linking them together. And it did not relate readily to then, the, back to the criterion for around surrounding developments. So, what you'll see, what we do as staff with these decisions, is to the extent this kind of issue comes before you again, where someone is appealing a condition imposed by the hearings official, our staff report will analyze it the way that it needs to be analyzed to pass muster with what they've said here.
Do we know why, in the first phase, the setback wasn't reduced against adjacent developments?
What I remember at that time was, it was a different process that was gone through. We changed processes.
You're right. Yep.
I may be old, but I do remember some of these things.
Commissioner Belcher is next for questions and comments.
Okay. First question, is the time for appeal completed? Do we not have an option to appeal? That's unfortunate. I, too, feel like, A, I wish the record had been clearer, because we certainly had substantive discussion about this issue. And I wish it had gone forward, but it didn't. The appeal period is over, so my final procedural question is, is this our only option? Can we revert to the hearings official's original decision about the one-story, two-story?
I gave that a fair amount of thought. You would need to go back and re-decide. I mean, you would have to basically come up with a decision that conflicts with what you said the first time.
Well, to me, there's a difference here, in that we can't deal with the compatibility issue one way. My second question, before you answer this, I'll throw my hidden agenda in. And that is, if we did go back and affirm the hearings official's decision, could we then add the condition that we were told we couldn't add, if we had affirmed his decision?
No. No. I mean, the point is, that was not on the table.
In any case.
Yeah. I mean, the only, and what Luba says is sort of an aside, really, is what we're kinda reading around right now. There are situations where you could do it. But you have to really show that, I mean, the only reason you could look at a new aspect, like we did in this case, is if, looking at the issue on appeal, removing that condition caused a non-compliance with that criterion that you needed to somehow address in another way. And so, if you were, if the decision had been to affirm the hearings official, there would have been no opportunity to impose yet another condition.
Okay. So, let's go back to whether we have the opportunity to reverse and affirm the decision. What are your thoughts there?
I don't think that you can at this point, because again, I mean, that ship has sailed. The whole process of these appeals is that you're winnowing the issues. You're, you know, getting fewer and fewer issues as you go up. At this point...
You've thrown it out.
Yeah. I mean, it's gone. And you can't on remand, open up new things on your own.
Okay. Let me try one more way. And that is, in the future, do we need to strengthen the compatibility with adjacent neighborhood code in order to not have this problem?
No, I just think you need better findings. And as Gabe pointed out, I mean, part of the problem in this case, I think, for you, was that there was no opposition. You actually were the first people to look at, really, that issue. Because even before the hearings official, I don't think there was any participation by anybody other than the applicant.
Go ahead.
And so, you know, you were kind of being watchdogs on that issue. What will change is that now that we have a Luba case that sets out how you can get there, if you want to get there, we will say, "Okay, we hear you. What we'll do in going back to craft the decision that you get, is kinda use this as a map to get there, assuming we can, in future decisions."
Editorial comment. My fear is that the land use process in Oregon's gotten so complex and so difficult, that a neighbor wouldn't understand the implications of notice such as this. So, the fact that there was no opposition may be an artifact of the status of our land use system, rather than their not being concerned about the issue.
And then, when they show up, it's outrageously complicated, that it's hard.
There's a good book out on that.
I understand that. It's due at the library today, but I hope to extend it.
Yeah. It's problematic. I mean, folks do, I mean, it's not just coming and showing up, it's actually being sophisticated enough to provide the right kind of testimony. And it's a big problem. I agree. And when I, you know, retire, I'll throw myself into that sort of...
I'll join you.
So, if it helps, the issue around compatibility, and we certainly understand your concern about that, and how that may or may not affect kind of future issues. To us, this is really not, Luba didn't say that your compatibility standards are substandard, or you don't have enough in your code to rely on. Has nothing to do with that. It's really just the circumstances that were under appeal that really are at the heart of this. So, as far as precedent-setting issues are concerned, I don't see that at all. These were circumstantial issues attached to an appeal that was very narrowly defined. And they basically said, "You extended beyond the bounds of that appeal," of what was on appeal. That has nothing to do with whether or not we have the right code provisions, the right criteria in place. So, the best thing we can do is, if these things start to come up, is have that conversation early on, as part of the appeal hearing, to see whether or not that's a topic we can entertain as part of what is on appeal. I think there was a lot of concern about where the boundaries were in this one. And I think, you know, you guys tried to take that as far as you could. And, you know, from what I read, Luba said, "He went beyond the boundaries that was part of what was on appeal." That isn't making any statement about the ability to look at adjoining properties or surrounding compatibility concerns. Those are still part of our domain.
Let's let Commissioner Duncan go, and I'll get you.
Jeff, I'm okay.
You're okay? Okay. Go ahead, then.
Well, forgive me for saying this, but I wish our argument had been better made. Because I think we made it here. I wish it had made it to Luba.
Commissioner?
Actually, I do. If I remember correctly, that back when we did that, we were still on written minutes versus the eye in the sky watching.
Those were recorded.
Were they?
Yeah, I had recordings. I looked, I looked really hard. Look at my, I mean, I looked for what I could find to put in the Luba brief on this.
You know, I think, again, going through a lot of this type of stuff, the Planning Commission believes that it has well-covered a lot of these findings. And we find after the fact that there's these little things that get thrown in, that we thought we were understanding. Because I agree with you, Randy, that was my belief, too, is we talked about compatibility, we talked about this, that, and the other thing. And I wonder, had we, had we done the same thing, but had talked about if single-family, or if single-story buildings were on the particular lots that we had exempted, would that have strengthened it versus a two-story? I mean, then we would've been tying it back to the one versus two.
Yeah. I mean, possibly, that may...
Part of the process is trying to learn how we're better at what we do. Because again, you're right, John, it is so complex, that we believe we're covering it very, very well, and yet, we find out after the fact that we didn't. And I think it's real important, because we need to make sure we do it on both sides, whenever we're talking about it, how we feel about something. And it's, you know, and unfortunately, the way the Planning Commission operates, by the time you start to understand what you ought to be doing, we get termed out, and somebody else comes in and sits down.
Well, and to be clear, I mean, in these pages that we're reading, where Luba has set this out, you notice, they're not citing any cases. This is new law. So, this determination...
I'm so happy that we helped.
I know. We're really good at that. But as Luba tells other jurisdictions, when this particular issue comes up, how they have to handle it, they'll be citing, you know, treadmill Rivendell versus City of Eugene, you know. So, I wouldn't say that they weren't savvy enough, or, you know, I think it's a matter of, well, this is how they look at it. Luba feels really, really responsible for making sure that they don't issue a decision, and fail this in some cases, but that they don't issue a decision that just basically prolongs, they actually try to move something forward. And I think that what they did here is, they took that next step then, and basically said, "Okay, and so, here's what we think."
Commissioner Randall?
I think if I'm understanding Randy's concerns with this, and I share them, it's that because it is new law, we're essentially establishing a precedent here that in future cases might be used to maybe whittle away at some of the concerns that we have on some of those setbacks. Is that a fair assessment?
That was where I was concerned. But I think, if I'm understanding Emily correctly, the way, the way the, what do you call it? The principle, or the finding, or whatever, from the legal...
Because it's so narrow.
It's general enough that it won't just pertain to adjacent neighborhoods and compatibility. This is bigger, how you deal with eliminating conditions, and how you can impose new conditions based on that regardless of...
Right. So, for example, let's take a transportation condition, where maybe the hearings official imposes a trip cap. And you guys get it, and you don't think the trip cap is right, but when you eliminate it, you have big transportation problems. And so, instead of the trip cap, you're authorized to impose a different condition that maybe improve this, add a lane here, put a light there. Because eliminating the trip cap may have caused an inconsistency with a criterion, you've got to address that. You don't think the trip cap was the right thing. You're gonna impose a condition that addresses the same...
That substitutes for the trip cap.
Yeah. And we will do it very systematically, according to sort of how they instruct us here. So, I think that's, that's right.
Other questions?
I'm sorry. Well, you know, I remember this Planning Commission puts as much reasoning into these things, and tries to be fair, and come out with at least a reasoned decision, whether or not appellants or applicants agree with that or not. I guess what I strive for is that whatever we go forward with, from the city perspective, is that we Luba proof it. And I'm surprised that we're, you say we're getting more remands?
Well...
Are you anticipating that, or are they actually...
You know, sort of aside from the record that we're dealing with here, we're seeing more appeals. A lot more appeals than we have in the last few years. I mean, part of it, I think, has to do with the economy, and sort of how desperate things are. But the truth is, when you have an opportunity, when there are a lot of issues, the reason you guys see appeals with 27 issues is because something's gonna stick. You know? The more you put out there. This one actually only had two. This was, and to be honest with you, the big issue was the fee issue. It's kinda weird that we're here right now. But the, what we're seeing is, and you've seen them, too, these appeals with, you know, 25 assignments of error, they bring 17 of them to Luba, we win many of them, we get remanded on a few. It's a remand nonetheless, but it, there've been plenty of people in the state who have said, "Any land use attorney worth their, you know, worth their weight in salt is gonna be able to find at least one issue that they can get remanded." And it's kind of...
Sorry comment about our system.
And it could well be a Pyrrhic victory. I mean, the remand is meaningless, and we deal with it, and they still are in the same boat.
Yeah. I mean, we tend not to, like, go crazy and tout, "Oh, we won on 17 assignments of error and lost on two. It's a victory." We just kinda go about dealing with our business, but, I mean...
So, a question that I have, Emily, is, you mentioned that this has application for the future, relevance for future work for us. Has this, we've talked about how complex the process is already. Has this made the process more complex, that we're gonna have to build, make sure we build more comprehensive and applicable records to do anything?
Well, in your position, you really have, it's hard for you to build much of a record. I mean, you can put your thoughts in writing, but the record is normally intact when it comes to you.
Well, that's what I mean. The record is what we say at the meetings, isn't it?
Yeah.
Right?
I have a different view of these things. I mean, other lawyers hate this area of law, because there are so, you can't just open up a statute book and know what to do. There's tons of it located in all these decisions about how to handle this stuff. I look at this as a good thing, because it's one more thing that we know how to do. It's another rule, it's inaccessible to most people, it's a pain, but it's not really a rule, but it tells us how to do it right. And for me, okay, now we know. We'll do it that way. It's not such a bad thing. It's not a bad rule of law.
But it seems like you're limited by our ability to articulate our concerns and make them relevant to the appeal. I mean, you're, you were, I think, limited by what was in the record.
Right.
I.e., what was said by us, and the questions asked, and the responses generated, correct?
We're that, we're in that position a lot. That's a lot of the time while you'll see us asking you for more. "I need more on that. Can you tell me more about why this or that?" And we just didn't know to ask those questions on this. But yeah, there are a lot of things like that, where, you know, the way the law works is, it needs to have more in the record around your thoughts around certain things, or "I need an interpretation." And I push you guys hard to get more on paper, so we have an interpretation that I can defend. So, yeah. But that's why you have staff here.
And Emily, can you correct me also? I was just looking as far as clarification in future proceedings. And in this case, we're also limited somewhat by what the hearings official looked at, right? Because he didn't look at the compatibility as a problem.
Yeah.
And so, that was, and that wasn't where the appeal originally was. It was about internal, and so, that's kinda, I think, where some of the limitations ended up being...
Because my recollection was that there was some misses on the hearings official part on the whole, on that whole issue.
Yeah.
And, and you know, if the hearings official makes an error, in our opinion, but we don't know that unless, until and unless it comes to us in appeal. And the only thing we're allowed to look at is what the appeal issues are, even though we see that, hey, he missed on this. I mean, there's something, the process is flawed. If it's, you know, there's no, you know, the appellant can, the person, the applicant can appeal, but once it comes to us, it seems to me, you know, we're only, as I understand it, we're only allowed to look at the appeal issues, even if we feel like the appeal officer made a mistake, or missed on an important issue. That doesn't feel right. It doesn't seem right.
Well, that means, if that's how you feel, then you should be a hearings official.
Uh-oh. Oh, no. You know, I happen to know a retired guy that's looking for more things to do.
But it is, I mean, it's sort of, you're like the judicial system, and you're the Court of Appeals, not Luba.
Thank you.
You know, it's your role as an appellate body, and it is difficult. But it relates to that. I mean, if a hearings official, you know, issues a decision, and you might get appealed on one issue, you might be reading something in his decision that is not on appeal at all, and nobody said anything about it, and it makes you crazy, but you can't go there. And this is a kind of a further refinement of that particular rule.
For some of you that have been around, we've had that, with very complex PUDs, with 25 appeal items, and there's five other ones you're looking at... 25 appeal items, and there's five other ones you're looking at that weren't appealed that you had concerns over. We've been there before on that question. I think, you know, keep in mind, this is, I still don't see this as an earth-shattering decision. There's, there's a particular ban within the appeal realm that this helps provide some clarification for. I think it's a good, you know, heads up for all of us as we're looking at what is on appeal, being careful about making sure we're within the record, those kinds of things. It's further clarification of that. But you've heard Emily talk about that in appeals before. It's not as if we're not savvy to that and trying to be careful. I see this as more just clarification about where some of those boundaries are, and it isn't issue specific. It's really more of a procedural kind of thing that I think they're trying to send a message to. I don't think it opens up or sends us sideways on how we've approached appeals in the past. It just, it's one element of appeals that we need to be even more diligent about in the future. I don't see this as much more than that.
I have Commissioner Duncan down for another comment.
Yeah, just, I've had the opportunity here recently to go back and look at some old appeals on a project I'm working on. And I'm, and this is 20-plus years ago, and I'm amazed when I look at the record and I look at the findings and everything, you know, they're down like this. The entire record, if it gets to 60 pages, is gigantic. And yet I see where we are today, where it's not uncommon to have 2,000 pages and, you know, everything else. And here's something else that we just-
That's going to make it more complicated.
...learn. And I almost, you almost need to have a separate body to act as the Planning Commission because of the sheer details that have to be in all this. And this is not something that, that newer commissioners even going to understand years into their process. And it seems like it's just going to get more and more. And I mean, the evidence from appellants coming in and everything else, I mean, we've seen that information just grow to, you know, just be volumes and volumes. And I don't see how we're going to get better. I'm just going to think we're going to get worse and worse on these things, particularly if you're talking about more and more remands.
We need to find other ways to resolve issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or start working on statewide planning goal issues to try to help reduce-
So with that backdrop, realize that in this case, this is it. This was the record, and it actually includes, this, this volume actually includes all the notices, it includes minutes from all your meetings. So this actually includes more than what you would normally consider the record. There wasn't a lot in this one.
Well, that's because there was no one else.
Right.
And I mean, I have that concern that, as John said, that you've got neighbors that don't even know what they're supposed to do or even understand that something's going on. And it concerns me because we talk about this sort of being sort of a minor, but there were things, as Randy was saying, that we were trying to accomplish, and there, there could be an effect on people and their property. And I'm not saying it's negative or positive or whatever else, but it's kind of like, this does have an impact, what Luba is telling us to do. And maybe it's not that important to those people that are across the fence from this, but it may also have an effect on those people. So I think that's the concern. Not only do we want to look at it globally, but we need to watch out for private property ownership to-
Yep.
-and the effects that we can cause.
Commissioner Belcher.
So in summary, just so I understand, would we have been on better ground if we had affirmed the one-story, two-story issue and added an additional condition that one-story properties on the edge also needed protection? The adjacent properties needed protection as well? Would that have been more defendable?
I'm not following you-
If we had not reversed the hearings official's decision-
Right.
-on one-story, two-story setbacks-
Right.
-but said that we felt additionally there needed to be a requirement for any property that's adjacent to an existing lot, any of the other-
Oh, one-story or two-story. You couldn't have done that.
We couldn't have done that.
No.
Well, if we had rescinded it, though, and it created a conflict with another criterion, as Randy-
Right.
-talked about, and we brought that into play-
That would be the bottom.
Then we could have.
Right. Yeah, but you couldn't have added on that way. So I'm, I'm just glancing at what's in the record, and it looks to me like there are-
20 lots.
17 lots that are around the subdivision that are not Rivendell. They're Ryan Meadows. Yeah, out of 61. No, out of, there's 61 lots in this particular.
Okay, I'm ready to hold my nose and vote.
Commissioner Lettich.
What if we don't do what staff is recommending we do? What are the ramifications of that since?
Like do nothing.
So do nothing is, you would be subject to a writ of review, like a writ of mandamus. It's basically what happens on remand is the applicant can request that you take action and then you have 98 days to do it. And that 90 days becomes the same thing as your 120-day rule. So if you did nothing and the 90 days elapsed, they could file a writ of mandamus in circuit court, and the burden would shift, and I don't, I don't think our chance would be great of prevailing in any way. You want to talk about any other options?
What if we vote no, not to make these changes? Or I guess-
Well, that's inaction.
Okay.
Inaction, yeah.
A writ of mandamus, can the most senior member go to jail or?
It's the incoming chair.
We don't know.
It's elected.
It'll make an interesting election.
I don't do those. I don't go to circuit court and get a litigator to do that.
I'm with John. I'm holding my nose on this one.
Well, I mean, I guess I can vote to accept it because it seems to me that if we do nothing or vote no, it occurs anyways, which then just puts staff and everybody else into more work that accomplishes zero in the, in the long run, I'm gathering.
Well, I mean, I want to be clear. What do you mean by vote no?
Well, or say we're not going to do this. We're going to stick with our old and we're going to tell Luba that they need to do their homework better.
Yeah.
We don't believe they've done their homework correctly-
Correct.
-in their decision. I mean, that's sort of what Randy's saying, is we're basically telling Luba, you're not our big brother. You're somebody who's telling us something and we don't think you're doing it correctly.
So, okay, in other words, re-adopt the order that you initially-
Yeah.
And tell them to go do their homework again.
And the applicant would appeal it. I, at that point, we'd be paying attorney's fees. We, I would just want you to change it somehow. You'd have to change it somehow. Yeah, it's not, I mean, believe me, I don't think any of us were particularly psyched to see this result.
My hesitancy is, you know, we've, it's been mentioned that the neighbors haven't been to any of the hearings and they haven't voiced in any kind of concern. And having been in this circumstance more than once, when the buildings actually start to go up-
Right, when the-
Then we'll hear about it. And those people that are-
Well, to be clear, there was a neighborhood applicant meeting, and they actually had neighbors there. They had-
Yeah, but weren't they almost all from the first phase of the subdivision? I seem to remember that was a comment.
I was surprised. It was that's meeting. Oh, it's 1250 Irvington. No, these appear to be addresses Irvington Drive, Maryvale Road. I mean, I don't know where these are. Altra, Springwood, Corbell, Corbell, Wendover, Canterbury.
Those are next, those are next door.
Yeah. All the wine streets are going to be the other subdivision.
So they did have an applicant meeting before it even got to the hearings official, presumably.
But would it have been clear to the applicants that the three-foot setback was proposed in an applicant's hearing? It sounds pretty specific.
Yeah.
And it may be that that much distance didn't matter to somebody because they just don't know it. But I'm just wondering if it came up in the discussion.
Well, shame on us first time, or, well, first time, shame on us second time if we don't catch it.
Do the motions.
I can't.
Is discussion exhausted? Is there any other questions or comments? Well, I'm going to put the motion out there and then we'll see who's willing to hold their nose. A motion to, I make a motion to vacate the October 25, 2010 order to, order and adopt instead, in its place, a new final order as reflected in this AIS package dated today, June 11.
I'll second.
Discussion? Vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Let me send a picture to Luba.
Sounds like the motion carries. Mr. Duncan?
Well, why we have Emily here, because we don't get to see her very often. If, in these other remands, we talk occasionally about reopening records.
Mm-hmm.
Can we, if we reopen a record, can we be very specific as to what can be discussed?
Yes.
Let's say a setback of three versus five feet. And be so specific that we don't end up with everybody coming and talking about everything in the world.
Yes, I mean-
We can define what we're looking for in those.
And we, we generally do.
No, but I mean, be very, very specific to a point where if someone steps up to speak and it's not pertaining, that doesn't pertain to that, if say it's a one-issue item, that we can stop their testimony.
Well, that's a, that's an issue for you to decide how you want to handle that situation. I would generally say don't. I would say let them talk.
We did that, we did that once before with a couple of people, one who ended up being a planning-
Usually what a body-
Planning Commission.
The chair will say, you know, I don't, I don't think what you're offering us relates to the criterion, you know, we can't consider that. But you generally let people talk about what they came to talk about, and then you just give that testimony the weight that it deserves.
But we can describe it, though.
Oh, yeah. And we do in the notice. Normally when we do that, the notice that's provided to folks specifically says the issues on remand will be these, testimony should be related to these.
Can, can we as Planning Commission, if we're going to hear those, be involved in that notice writing so that it covers issues that may, we may want to hear about or not hear about? Are we allowed to do those?
The only, the, when we limit the issues on remand, it is based on what Luba has told us. So there shouldn't be issues that you, I mean, there, there may be issues you'd like to consider, but you can't add them in unless Luba had, Luba's order authorizes it. I mean, we could talk about that if that ever came up, but in most cases, if we just did one, will Goodpasture come to these guys?
Not that one.
Not the next one.
Okay.
Scheduled for hearings official.
We just did a-
Not yet.
A limited notice for hearings official's remand hearing coming up. We'll, I mean, we'll think about that, but there's usually not any discretion or policy judgment involved in how it's limited. It's usually we have to do what we have to do.
But is it possible that that's because you folks believe that Luba really has all the authority they think they have, and we might not agree?
That's not your call.
Well, let's make it our call.
Nope.
Got to move upstairs, I guess.
What'd you say about jail?
Now, since this part is over, I thought I could comment. I have to disagree with Emily. I think this is an issue we need to deal with in code and, because the problem from my point of view is now you have a hearings official decision that says it's perfectly fine to reduce the setbacks even to an adjacent property. And, you know, this could be R2 to R1, you know, in other words, could be R3 to R1. We didn't adjust that, and that's why I think it's really important to deal with this transition issue. Because if it was, if it was specified in code that a PUD couldn't reduce the setbacks on the perimeter lots, then this wouldn't have been an issue. And if, if the, if the hearings official had found that way, then you would be justified in disagreeing with him because you would have, you know, the code itself to back you up. But the way it is now, now you've got a hearings official decision, at least one, maybe the prior one, whether it dealt with it or not, I don't know if Rivendell proved it or just got it approved. And now you also have Luba's decision. So from my point of view, you know, it's, looking at it from the outside point of view, you've got a lot worse problem than you ever had before.
You certainly could. I mean, your PUD criteria, with this allowance to be kind of give and take, and you definitely could restrict your discretion. You mean, you have given, the city code gives you lots of discretion, you as an initial decision maker who, on PUDs, you guys are always on appeal, but the initial decision maker has a lot of discretion to balance those things. And a code amendment to reduce that discretion and be more specific about what can and cannot be done in PUDs would address that. I was referring to Luba's holding, if that needed, if that implied the need for a code amendment. I don't think so. You're talking about more the substantive issue, and you certainly could put something in that says, okay, but you can't, you can't change interior setbacks on adjoining subdivisions or, in ways that relate to compatibility. So there were a couple of things-
Yeah, we have some, a couple of other things I think that commissioners are going to want to bring forward and then, so I think I may reverse the order here for our final, and that is let the commissioners bring forward the items they'd like to talk about. Commissioner Lettich.
Yeah, I emailed you that I'd be talking about this today. Would, in Sunday's Register Guard commentary section, there was a guest editorial, no reason to sprawl in Vision Eugene, Eugene needs a no UGB expansion option. I'm not, I'm not at all criticizing the editorial where the writers privileged to write that. It just, when I read it, it kind of just retraces a lot of what we've already talked about. And something that we did talk about was how to, how to convey to the community all of the hours of discussion and deliberation that got us to the point where we are with Envision Eugene. And that's why I was suggesting that it might be worthwhile for us, not so much, not at all to respond point by point to the items here because that, for one reason, just would take too long, but I don't think it's necessary either. But just to point out to the community, the amount of hours that staff and voluntary citizens have put towards coming to the conclusion that Envision Eugene has come to, have taken the liberty to draft something just in terms of timeliness if we should want to respond, if we find that appropriate. So I would just put that on the table, see if that's something we want to do.
Thank you once again, Randy, for taking the initiative and writing a great letter. As you probably recall, I voted against the percentage of mixed and single-family housing, which ended in the requirement to expand the urban growth boundary. So if we move forward with this, I would like to propose adding a sentence that would say, for example, this is in the second, at the end of the second paragraph where we talk about how this process was inclusive and give and take, as it were. For example, the decision by the Planning Commission to support the housing mix that results in the need to expand the urban growth boundary for additional housing was not a unanimous decision. In the spirit of I can live with it compromise, the commission forwarded our recommendations, noting the difference of opinion. Which I think supports the collaborative effort and also more clearly elucidates at least my position on this issue.
Can I say one more thing?
Okay. For example, the decision by the Planning Commission to support the housing mix, and I'm more than comfortable with changing the language, that results in the need to expand the urban growth boundary for additional housing was not a unanimous decision. In the spirit of I can live with it compromise, the commission forwarded our recommendation, noting the difference of opinion.
That would be fine with me. I just noticed that typically letters to the editor are about 200 words.
I think they actually have a limitation on how many words are-
Yeah.
Yeah, and-
Were you there already?
Yeah, I really smashed it down. I think we're about 204, 214, so I have no problem with inserting that.
The, I've, in letters I've written before, if it's, if it's well-written and it's over a little bit, they don't-
Okay.
And they might edit a little bit, but-
Yeah. I would have no problem.
I think that's good to point out. But I think it-
Go ahead.
I, I think it's, would be good for us to respond, and I agree with Randy, not necessarily on a point-by-point refutal, but just to respond in general about the process and if- about Envision Eugene. I think, and I guess my opinion is, I think on the whole, as an aside, the reason that I am there on responding is, I think on the West Eugene MX proposal, I think LTD didn't respond fast enough or well enough, and I think it's created problems, and I'd like us not to do that with Envision Eugene. So I think it's worth responding.
Am I seeing head nods generally around the table? It's worth responding? Yeah, I'm fine. I'm fine with John's addition.
John Jaworski emailed me since he couldn't be here. He said, "I read the article, and if I was present at the meeting, I would support your response. The only downside is your response might create more rhetoric on the issue from the Register Guard."
Wouldn't that be a good thing?
They tend to tell it is a good decision and a good process, so assumed that they would continue there.
You know, well, two things. One is, one way to gauge, I haven't looked, but one way to gauge is they have this, their online site, and you can see if there's 50 comments or already responses to this, then it definitely would, you know, on their online site, that probably would make sense to respond. In other words, if there are no comments on their online site, which I doubt, you might let it lay, but I suspect that there's probably a lot of comments there, so it probably makes sense to respond. The only other thing that I think would be useful to somehow add it, and again, maybe wordsmithing it, would be add a sentence, is, you know, the process is still, you know, not, a lot of the parts of Envision Eugene have to be put in place still. So I don't know how you-
Implementation.
Yeah, implementation is still, you know, a process that's going on.
Does that, does the last sentence not get to that point, Steve?
Yeah, no, I think that, I guess you could say that that gets to it. It's just, I was trying to add that, you know, is it two years that we're looking at for the implementation phase, or?
Four to six months.
Okay, well, you know, then we add a time-
On Luba proof?
Yeah, and Luba proof.
That would just say that there's, because a lot of times you have this general stuff like that, and people don't understand.
And again, it's just the amount of space that's the constraint that I was concerned with. So can you send that?
Well, I guess I'm hesitant to do the wordsmithing here because I haven't taken diligent notes, so.
Well, I can send you what I've written. I took two words out of it already, yeah.
And it's inserted into this draft?
Your document, yeah.
So you'll send it to Jeff, and you'll forward it?
Okay.
And for the record, on the editorial online, I don't see any responses.
Ah, you beat me to it.
Okay, well, then that's a good clue, too, because if it's pretty quiet, then you have a question, you know, it's, then you start stirring it up when you respond. I mean, I know that some other ones that I've looked at, there are like 50 responses, so. And also, it may be fairly, is this this weekend?
Yeah, yesterday.
You might want to wait a day or two to-
Well, it always takes some time.
I would suggest we send it right away.
Yeah.
The only thing I might add would be, just so it's, you know, Jeff Mills, Eugene Planning Commission, and six commissioners or some-
Why don't we just put all our names down?
Oh, good idea.
Well, they won't take all the names. That's why they always say, "And six cosigns or whatever." Yeah, just put-
Yeah, that sounds reasonable. For the Eugene Planning Commission, your name?
Yeah, do it that way, just say, "Jeff Mills, Chair for Eugene Planning Commission."
Probably say Randy for Eugene, because Randy drafted it, so.
No, I just was describing all of our, this just comes out of what we already made public.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get him to do it yet.
And if I could, one suggestion I would throw out, if you do send this in, I would copy the mayor and council first, so you give them a heads up. This is going to be it.
First or concurrently?
Well, concurrently, because it'll take a while to get into the paper, just so you give them a heads up. You can send it through us, and we can forward it on.
That would be the way to do it.
So I'll draft it up and send it to you, and then I'll wait.
When you're ready to send it to the RG, send it to me so we can just copy it to the council, mayor and council.
And I'll hold until I hear back?
No.
No, no, you can do it simultaneously, because they're not going to, obviously, it'll take a-
They'll give the mayor and council the-
Send it to the garden CC, Steve.
Right, right.
Did you get it this afternoon?
I was going to try to do it now, and it's not connecting, but I'll do this until I get home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other items from commissioners.
John? You had talked about, I had requested that we discuss before we leave today, where we are with potential changes in appeal fees.
I don't know if we have any changes on the horizon, as much as we are doing a lot to track the time and document what the staff costs are as we go through appeals. I mean, the whole topic of fees has been out there for some time, and frankly, we had a lot of fee issues that we've been pondering for a few years now that, for the most part, we put on hold because of economic conditions. We haven't brought that back for further conversation. So, you know, appeals are one of several topics on fees that we have kind of sitting on the sidelines a little bit. But for the time being, I think the part that we're trying to do is a little bit more documentation around what the true costs are of those appeals as we go forward. I think anecdotally, I think for the most part, we're not taking in enough to cover the cost to process them, if that's any information. That doesn't necessarily mean the fee is right, but the tough policy call with all these fees is, to what degree should they be cost-recovery based, and how much should be subsidized? And it's always a tough call. But at this point, I'm not aware of any other processes bringing that back for any public conversation at this point.
Well, the reason I asked, if I may, was that we had a discussion in the Neighborhood Leaders Council about a recent land use decision, and in that discussion, the point was made by some of the neighborhood leaders that they felt that perhaps that process was driven by the fact that neighborhoods find it difficult to find the application fee to appeal decision, that previously it was a flat fee of $500 or so. Now it's tied to a percentage of the applicant's fee. And they were wondering, what would be the process to get that changed back to what it was before? If I may speak for individuals.
Well, actually, it hasn't really changed for years. It's been, there are different formulas that we have for different types of appeals. Some of those are driven by state statute, and then others are more local decisions. So those have been in place for some time. We adjusted some of those six years ago, but they weren't necessarily changes in the flat fee versus some kind of percentage. Those have always been out there before.
So if someone from the NLC wanted to talk to staff about that, who should they contact?
Start with Lisa.
Commissioner Baker?
To follow up on that, I also have a concern about the fees, mainly because the way we're starting to do things where you get, and I think we've seen, you've seen several of those over the last year, so you start to get like three things, you know, you get a, let's take, you know, I can give you an example, like, albeit, you got a zone change, you got a height adjustment, you got a, you know, dimension adjustment. They're all separate in three, and yet really they're not. And if you take a, you know, neighborhood group, there's no way that they can afford the fees for three separate appeals, because that's the way it's structured. So I think we should try to look at, see how we can change those appeals fees. So when we have one of those combinations, a neighborhood group pays the lowest of the three, and that can cover all three of the issues. Because otherwise, I could picture where you have a situation where you've got five different things, and there's just no way, I mean, neighborhood group is going to have a hard enough time scraping together $2,000 or $3,000 for the one. They aren't going to scrape together 15 for all these other ones that sort of chop at, you know, setback and, you know, all these other things. So I think we really need to take a look at how those things are, the way, because the way the projects are coming in now.
Commissioner Duncan?
One of the things that I've had concerns when it comes to, and it really comes to the representation of what is a neighborhood group. We've in the past talked about neighborhood associations, which is fine, but then we end up with different organizations forming for a particular issue. And I don't know how, I guess I'd like to hear a discussion if we're going to talk about reducing fees, that we talk about how we make a determination as to who gets the reduced fee.
Actually, our fee structure right now has reduced fees, $250 appeal fee for a number of kinds of decisions, but not for all of them. And for that reason, you've seen a few of them where you'll see an appeal, like, there was a zone change and a partition. And the neighborhood group appeals only the zone change, because that's the one they get with the reduced fee, but not the partition. And those ones, we recognize that, we only allow it for those organizations that the council has recognized. And I would advocate strongly for keeping it, if that's clear.
Well, I could agree with that if all of the groups were reasonably similar in geographic coverage or size. But even you take my neighborhood, Cal Young, now that's even been divided, it's still one of the largest neighborhoods, and if I live on the west side of the neighborhood, I could, I don't really have an interest in what's on the east side, but that's really different than if you take a West University neighborhood, which geographically is much smaller, or Jefferson West Side, where the neighbors are pretty well communicating with each other because they're only a very small percentage of what my neighborhood is. So that's still unfair, then, because, and the other part is, if I'm really interested in my neighborhood, my area about a concern, and the neighborhood association says, "Well, I don't care, none of us live over that way, we don't care," then I don't get that benefit. And I may still have a reasonable argument. So that seems kind of odd to me, that that would be the way to do it.
Yeah, and we've had that situation come up exactly in the Cal Young Neighborhood Association around Oakway, and it was the question of, do they get the reduced fee? And in fact, it was the, they supported the North Green Apartments, actually, was one of the primary appellant's, and they ended up taking a vote, though. They did get the Cal Young Board to vote to support it and get the reduced fee. But, yeah, there is that step, then, of having to get the-
And there's a lot of politics in our neighborhood associations.
But I would argue that generally neighborhoods are more than, likely than not, to take on land use issue in general. For better or worse.
Yeah, I'll just chime in, but, you know, we, I know that, you know, neighborhood services would like to, and city isn't, is trying to sort of get the neighborhoods to be more normalized in size, but I think that's just something, you know, there's not the same legislative mandate that there is for voting for representatives to do that. So it's not an ideal process. And, but for the time being, I think that's, those are city-recognized organizations, you know, they can fall out of favor and be disunrecognized, and we don't really have another mechanism like that. And, you know, there certainly are other examples within Oregon where neighborhood, with city-sanctioned neighborhood groups are provided some benefits on fees for permits, whether we look in Portland, Corvallis, you know, whatever. So it's just, I don't see that we have any other reasonable alternative at this time. All we can do is, you know, ask neighborhood services and whatever to see if they could try to rationalize the sizes a bit. Some of them, it's like, some of them you really can't. I mean, Laurel Valley, you could add it to Fairmount, but that really wouldn't make, you know, it's like, it's a completely different area, so it's sort of like, we can do the way we do voting districts and add these odd little pieces together, but they don't make sense. So I think it's inevitable you're going to have more discrepancies. And again, it's not a gigantic discrepancy. It's not like a factor of 100, you know, it's a factor of five or something like that. So, the worst case. So, you know, I just don't think, there's not much we can do. That's my point of view. And why we give it to neighborhood groups, because we've sanctioned these groups, we expect them to be involved in certain planning issues and organizing them, you know, trying to help the city get feedback on projects that are coming down the line. So that's my perspective. Okay, thank you.
I guess I'll take the opportunity to bring up my attendance at the University of Oregon Neighborhood Organization Liaison Meeting that occurred last week. It was largely an informational meeting where the university basically summarized, went through their projects at hand that are coming up, and sought some, any concerns from the neighborhood, neighborhoods. All the local adjacent neighborhoods were represented there. It was a good meeting, I felt. As I said, it was, I feel pretty strictly informational. The thing I came away with from it, though, was kind of a related point, which gets to our other discussion, and that is, we started talking about what the future holds for that area, and the fact that the refinement plans and neighborhood plans are all somewhat out of date. In most cases, there are probably, you know, 15, 20 years, I think, since they've been updated or more. And when they were asked, they asked Terry, who was there, when she thought that they would be getting to some of these neighborhood plan refinements, and she basically, I think, quite honestly and accurately told them that the first ones of the area plans that would be got, that would be started on would probably be two years plus, somewhere in there. She gave a calendar date, I don't recall what it was.
2014.
Yeah, 2014, that sounds right. And after the meeting, a lot of, and during the meeting even, a lot of concerns from neighborhood leaders about that, in the university area with the rate of development that's underway, they're very concerned about not getting any refinement plan action or development in time to help address and deal with the development that's underway. So I guess I'm just passing that alarm, a sense of alarm that I got from the neighborhood leaders at that meeting, back to this group and to the planning staff, that, you know, to quote one of them, they said that, geez, you know, there's not going to, there's not going to be any single-family neighborhood left if we don't get to do this before that, before you're telling us. The rate of development is such that they felt like their neighborhoods are in danger. So to me, that was the most important thing I came away from the meeting, was the sense of urgency from the neighborhood organizations, not so much directly related to the university itself, but to all the impacts that the university generates.
Commissioner Baker?
Just to add a quick informational piece, just wanted to point out that West University has a refinement plan from the early 1980s.
Yeah.
South University has no refinement plan at all, which is, you know, it's getting a lot of development, because it's got R3 and R4 at the northern edge, and then you had Fairmount that has had some recent development, refinement work done on Walnut Station area, but not for the remainder of the neighborhood. But I think the real takeaway there is, you've got the, of the three, you've got one neighborhood that's never had any planning done at all on what should go on there, so.
And to go with that, you know, there was some talk, and matter of fact, I brought up, you know, the area planning effort that's underway in South Willamette, and, you know, the other area planning effort that went on around Walnut Station, as being kind of the current emphasis, and probably over the near term at least, it'll be the emphasis of the way we go about implementing portions of Envision Eugene. And I guess I just, another caution I have is that, just the potential for confusion around the concept of special area plan versus neighborhood refinement plan versus, you know, all these other mechanisms that we're using and how they overlap, and I won't say conflict, but potentially conflict, too. I certainly support what's going on in South Willamette and that plan. I think we just need to be cognizant of how that kind of effort compares and relates and interconnects with the other efforts that need to be done for the neighborhoods.
Other comments? Other items? Commissioner Lettig?
Do we have a public hearing next Tuesday evening?
Oh, yes.
Yes?
That's the side of the news. That's the sign ordinance.
Oh.
What are we, what's not?
Sign ordinance.
Uh, that'll be Jerry Lids.
Oh, it's Jerry, okay. This is Jerry Lids.
A colleague in the city attorney's office, Jerry Lids, will be joining you for that.
New, new attorney here?
No, no, he's-
Came and, we took, left and returned.
Yeah.
Well-seasoned.
Well, we'd be seeing information on that somewhere in the near future.
Yes, it's, it's something that, it's coming really from the city attorney's office and our building permit services division, so we haven't been as, as involved with all the details of that, but my understanding is Jerry's pretty much leading that discussion. So, there'll be AISs and the information coming, it's fairly, I believe, discreet changes that are being put forth.
This is sort of, I want to be like Springfield, changes.
No, it doesn't relate to that, and frankly, I'm not quite sure what he would want to relay to you, and so I'm going to let him do that.
Boy, was that a attorney speaker, wow.
But yes, he'll get information in advance of the meeting, so.
Heard of my colleague.
So there, Rick.
Yeah, she goes, "Throw me in jail later."
I don't want to miscommunicate anything.
How much longer will we be in this building, just through the, are we?
I, I don't know the last date, but yeah, you're right, some, the future hearings are not going to be here. I, I want to say August, I believe?
Was it August?
Back in the library?
We're going to Harris Hall.
Yeah.
What? Where are we going?
Harris Hall.
Oh, you mean-
The corner of his building.
Oh, yeah, I have to-
So, where are we going? Well, you probably-
Harris Hall.
And believe me, if you think that's a bad place, Harris Hall is terrible. You can't hear anything.
It'll be in, oh, the next coming one?
Yeah, that's here.
Yeah, yeah, we're still here.
We're here through August, I think.
That'll be our last one, though?
I don't know.
We're lucky.
Yeah.
Apparently, we've got a lot of remands coming.
Right.
Did you want me to run through that while I'm here?
Oh, yes.
Might as well.
Yes, please.
Okay, let's see what I can do.
I start thinking about my retirement.
I'm not that good at remembering which of these were from you guys and which actually came from a hearings official, so, um-
Some of these are not coming back to you, they could come to a hearings official.
Right. So, we just dealt with Treadmill, Rivendell, Good pasture three, as I like to call it, which is actually the Greenway decision.
That would be here.
That was remanded by Luba, it was appealed to the Court of Appeals, the Court of Appeals affirmed Luba's decision, and you will be seeing that bad boy again.
Is this like new information time?
Our, this is-
Yeah, that one, yeah, I think we will. There is a factual issue in that one.
Probably a combination of additional findings and new evidence.
About where is the Greenway? What is, where, you know, what is, what is Greenway, what is not?
And which policies of the Metro Plan and will Kenley Plan apply.
Are we allowed it?
The definition of a river.
They're all dots and moneys patterned.
Don't, don't-
I think, well, that's one, actually, it's a really good example of-
Are any Luba judges from Eugene?
How much we'll open it up and not.
No.
So, maybe we'll talk about that one. Also, on remand is, oh, this one goes to the hearings official, right, modification, final PUD and subdivision?
Yes.
Right.
Good pasture, and Willamette Oaks Phase Five interpretation doesn't go to you guys, although we won that beautifully at the Court of Appeals. AT&amp;T Cell Tower is on remand, but we haven't received the request that we act within 90 days, and we tend to wait for that, so we, we're not doing anything on that one quite yet, but that will be coming back to you, assuming AT&amp;T wants to continue with that one. OBO Luba, which, that's them, right?
No, they still have to-
So, we're in the appeal period.
So, Luba affirmed your decision, which was in a, a conditional approval of that development. It could be appealed to the Court of Appeals on June 20th is the deadline for filing that. Orchard Luba, which is the Ro House case, I have a brief due to the Court of Appeals tomorrow. Luba upheld your decision, affirmed your determination, which actually denied the zone change to allow that to go from low density to R 1.5. Luba affirmed your determination, and right now, my, I'm briefing on, to the Court of Appeals, on whether the zone change is an application for needed housing, and the neighbors who are involved in that are picking up the appeal issues that relate to whether or not we could apply some of the criteria, some of the, the criteria that relate to compatibility, whether or not they're clear and objective. So, if we prevail on the needed housing argument, their arguments are superfluous. Good Guys, was that them?
So, did they actually appeal that one? That one was appealed?
An applicant appeal?
Yes.
No.
Good Guys, was that Planning Commission?
Goes back to hearings official.
Hearings official.
And VA interpretation, not you.
They're saying, "We're not good guys." That's not us.
They didn't challenge you as good guys.
Um, you interested in hearing what the VA, because you actually did-
I sent them the-
Almost? Okay, so you're good on that. And you guys haven't had to deal with any capstone stuff, so that's not you either. There you go.
So, there's a lot of Luba appeals that you don't see as well, as you can tell. About half of these are ones that will come to you, or even maybe more. Other items?
Well, we, we keep mentioning this, but we still need to come back and deal with the transition zone stuff, you know, we can, I don't know, maybe it's with the, the other planning section, since you're the enforcement group, but it seems like we need to get something started, scheduled, even if it's just planning commissioners discussing it.
Well, we need to wait until we get direction from city council as to what they're going to move, move forward on.
Right.
I mean, if they decide that we're not going to put housing on key corridors, then transitions may not be necessary.
Well, and speaking for Lisa, you know, the, there's further work that's still going on with our whole work program as a whole, and so some of that will be coming back to you as well, for further discussion about kind of how to prioritize the various tasks. Obviously, there's a lot of things on our plate just for Envision Eugene alone, let alone any other issues, and how that all gets sorted and prioritized is something we're still working through. So, I think the last time that we spoke, probably at the retreat about this, that was going to be one of our next steps, was to come back to you to show you kind of that work program. So, that's coming, and that would be the place, I think, for this kind of conversation.
I just want to just clarify too, it's not just the, if they develop on corridors, because this question's come up over and over again with a bunch of the zone change issues, where we've talked about it, and we've seen it now with the PUD, and, I mean, very often it's fairly common that we have these issues with the transitions between zones, so, I think it's, it's not totally dependent on developing on the corridors for us to try to deal with these issues clearer, because then I think we short-circuit, you know, if we could short-circuit the hearings official when the appeals process, then I think that's the best way to eliminate time spent on all, all of those, is-
Other items? I have two. One of them, since Gabe's here, I'm taking advantage of his presence, Historic Review Board asked a, a, three months ago for a joint meeting with the planning commissioners. I think I had head nods that that was going to be okay, and I think we were thinking sometime in the late third quarter, Gabe, does that sound right to you?
That's right.
Should we put an agenda item on the next HRB to make sure that gets discussed, and so that they can come up with the things that they're most interested in talking to this body about?
I, I think so. The next meeting is, I believe, at the end of August.
Yeah, so-
So, timing would be good to talk about content in terms of a joint meeting. I'm not sure about the timing, but we can work back through.
Yeah, I think if it goes in the fourth quarter, that's okay. I just kind of want to make sure we get the ball rolling, and they're only meeting quarterly, roughly, every other-
Yeah, and, and I'll definitely capture this so that we can make sure it gets on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, okay. And my second item has to do with chairmanship and vice chairmanship for this body, and I'm kind of thinking maybe we should wait. I'm asking to have any more, to go to a vote, I don't know if it's time to do that yet or not, since Commissioner Jaworski's not present. Maybe we should wait. Commissioner Belcher?
Well, presumably there won't be a change in the commission, but isn't it on the 14th that the council is doing abortions and abortments?
I don't know the precise date, I'm not sure, but I haven't seen it. About right, yeah.
Assuming that won't make a difference, but if there was a new commissioner, we might want to wait till they came on board too.
Okay, right.
Hopefully not, but-
Because we have a change as of July 1?
Right, I mean, I think what we're trying to do is time appointments of officers pretty close to those new appointments of, of positions as well, which would mean around July 1st. So, I, yeah, it, it doesn't have to be on that date, but that would just be to correspond to any new membership, right.
So, we have a little bit of time.
Yeah, and it would make sense to allow council to make those appointments first before you make that decision.
Okay.
Any other items from commissioners? Any items for staff? So, I think we're done then? That'll thank everybody and adjourn the meeting.
Randy, you want to talk that way?
Yeah.